To the January 12, 2023, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dell Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Sabina.
Here.
Andrew Romerdal.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Scott Myers.
Here.
Dave Hale and Skylar Quinn are excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business are minutes. We have minutes from Thursday, December the 8th, 2022. Can I have a positive motion, please? Moved by Mr. Myers, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Are there any additions, deletions, modifications, edits to the minutes? Seeing none, is there objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Next order of business is a special order of business, disclosures. Are there any disclosures? Mr. Flynn?
For the consent agenda, is that now?
Mm-hmm. You just took those at your head.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to disclose that I was not at the last meeting, so I will not be coming on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Romerdal?
Madam Chair, I am disclosing that I was absent from the meeting dated December 8th and thus will be abstaining from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Sabina?
Madam Chair, I as well was absent for the December 8th meeting and will be abstaining from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Seeing none? Next order of business is the consent agenda, and due to these disclosures, there aren't enough members present tonight who are in attendance at the December 8th meeting to act on the consent agenda, so the resolution 2022-012 will be automatically postponed to the February meeting. Next order of business, there are no appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, which brings us to the public hearings, and we have three variance hearings tonight. And so I will go through the procedure by which the public may speak to the board on these matters. After the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing items, the chair will ask for the applicant to state their case. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. A concurring vote of a majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. On the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The chair will then open the hearing to public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify follow the time limits established by the rules of procedure. Representative groups, which include community councils and PTAs, have five minutes and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the board. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed and then turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals takes. The parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. With that, we will move to the first case, case 2023-0005. And the applicants are Joshua and Megan Chelf in attendance. And will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On December 16th, 2022, a total of 182 public hearing notices were mailed. One public comment was received, and it is in support of the variance. The Campbell Creek Community Council did not comment. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none? Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. Beginning on page 10 of your packet and going until page 14 are photos of the home that is the subject of the variance in this case. This is a request for a variance to allow a single-family house with an accessory dwelling unit to exceed the maximum allowable height in the R5 district by 1.1 feet. In terms of the approval criteria for a variance, for building height, approval criteria A does not appear to be substantially met. There are no extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. This is a conforming lot, but it should be noted that the Building Safety Division issued a building permit to the previous owner back in 2006 to add an accessory dwelling unit. The permit was approved by the Building Safety Division in error because it caused the building to exceed the maximum allowable height of 30 feet. The permit was issued in error, but the current owner is still responsible for resolving the issue by lowering the house by 1.1 feet or obtaining a variance. Today, the Building Safety Division requires building permit applications to include certain types of drawings and spot elevations, finished grade measurements to determine building height of new construction. These types of drawings weren't required back in 2006 when the permit for an accessory dwelling unit was issued. Both the zoning plan reviewer and the owner of the building would have had a difficult time identifying 1.1 feet of excess building height back in 2006. There's never been a complaint made about the height of the building in the 15 years since the accessory dwelling unit was added to the home. The current owners bought the property this way, and they have not increased the height of the house. The building height was recently discovered during the sale of the property to a new owner. Approval criteria B does not appear to be substantially met. The physical circumstances of subject property do not create an exceptional hardship on the property owner that would deprive them of a house. However, the building height is necessary for a load-bearing wall, so it would be very difficult and expensive to lower the roof. Also, it would probably not make it possible to keep the accessory dwelling unit and still comply with the maximum height requirement of 30 feet in the R5 zoning district. Given the community-wide shortage of housing, the municipality is changing regulations and policies to support the development of new housing of all types. The accessory dwelling unit regulations were amended in 2002 to allow variances for accessory dwelling units. There was a recent ordinance before that as well. The goal of all of these amendments to our zoning code are to create more housing. There is a new code amendment that was just approved in this room by the Assembly last night, which further tries to reduce restrictions on accessory dwelling units and make them easier to build and more available and, yeah, to deal with our housing shortage. Approval criteria C is substantially met. The subject property does not have a unique physical condition such as a wetland stream or slope. However, the accessory dwelling unit adds value to the house and increases the property value for the whole neighborhood. The R5 district is the only zoning district that allows mobile homes on individual lots, and most of the homes in this block are mobile homes. The hardship is not self-imposed. The building permit was issued in error. If the building height had been caught during the building permit review process, then there'd be no need for this variance. The current owners bought the house without knowing that the house was over height. The problem was created by the previous owner. Approval criteria D is met. Only one public comment was received of the many that we mailed, and it's in support of granting the variance. The lots in the neighborhood are subdivided in north-south configuration on this block, so the location and the height of the house do not disrupt scenic views of mountains to the neighbors. You can see the plating of the area on page 38 of your packet. There's no structural separation violation. Staff conducted a field investigation and found no drainage issues. Water runoff is not a problem. Approval criteria D is met. The variance will not change the character of the R5 zoning district. This is a house, single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit, mother-in-law apartment. It's an upgrade to the neighborhood. The majority of the houses in this duplex zoning district are mobile homes. Approval criteria C is met. The approval of the variance will not adversely impact neighboring properties. The accessory dwelling unit has safe egress. The building height is not related to a yard setback encroachment. There is sufficient space for road maintenance, snow storage, and fire and emergency medical services access. Approval criteria G is met. This is not related to reasonable accommodation or ADA accessibility. Approval criteria H is substantially met. This 1.1-foot variance is de minimis. It's very minor and not noticeable from East 65th Avenue. The accessory dwelling unit is located at the back of the house, which is in the rear of the lot, and the extra building height only covers a portion of the house, not the entire roof of the home. The department finds that the approval criteria A and B do not appear to be substantially met and therefore must recommend denial of the variance. However, if after the board finds, if the board finds that all eight approval criteria are met, then the approval should be subject to conditions of approval 1 and 2 on page 7 of your packet. The first one is just saying subject to the as-built in your packet. That's on page 27 of your packet, and that a notice of zoning action, including the resolution of approval for this variance, is condition of approval number two. So two standard conditions on the bottom of page 7. And that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the homeowner's representative is also here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? I have a question. This was not, it couldn't qualify for an administrative variance because it's so small?
Through the chair. Thank you, Ms. McKay. This is an excellent question. I should have written about that in the, and I intended to, in the staff report. Building height is not one of the things that's eligible for a minor modification. The old code, old Title 21, had a threshold for granting administrative variances where the planning director could approve administratively through their discretion, approve a variance of a certain tolerance, 5%. But in the new code, it changed names. It's a little bit different, but same idea, threshold of tolerance for a minor modification. But building height is absent from one of the things eligible for that type of variance.
And it's like 3%?
I didn't do the math, but 1.1 feet out of 30, yeah, I guess, right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Seeing none?
No.
Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record, please?
Hi, through the chair. My name is Ron Thompson, R-O-N-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N.
Please present your case. Please present your case.
I don't want to add a whole lot, except for staff did say it was a load-bearing wall. It wasn't a load-bearing wall, it's a sheer wall that existed prior to this addition that was put on. The sheer wall existed at the same height. The building was built to the same height as that sheer wall, so that, because you wouldn't have been able to build the building without the sheer wall based upon the code. The other question that I heard you ask was with regard to the code. I felt this was under the old code because it was a 2006 permit, so I felt that it was subject to the administrative variance process under the old code that it was submitted under, but that was not agreed upon. So therefore, we processed a variance request to ask that because it is under 5%. It's very small, it's under 2%, I think. So it was unfortunate. The building permit was submitted. Everything was built exactly as the building permit was submitted. It did go through a zoning review. Zoning did review it. At the end of the day, I don't know exactly how it went. I wasn't part of that. But at the end of the day, when we measured it and the zoning officer said, "Do a, have a land surveyor test it," we went and tested it, and it happened to be just barely over. So we are where we are and hope that you can understand that there was no intention of doing it. And I think that staff has been pretty good to work with on this, and the best that we could do is trying to present the picture of what happened and hope these owners don't have to, you know, subject themselves with demoing this building for such a minor violation. So I appreciate your time, and hopefully we can get through this tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2023-0005? Anyone at all? Okay. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No.
Okay. The applicant's representative has nearly eight minutes left. Do you have anything in additional? No. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please?
Move to approve.
Okay. Just a minute. Could you state your motion, please? It's right here.
I move in case 2023-005 to approve a variance from AMC Table 21.06-1, Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow a single-family home to exceed the maximum height of 1.1 feet, subject to conditions 1 and 2, shown on page 7 of the staff report.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Myers. It has been moved and seconded that a variance be granted to approve a variance from the Table of Dimensional Standards to allow a single-family home to exceed the maximum height by 1.1 feet. Will the maker of the motion please speak to your motion?
I'll speak to just the small amount of 1.1 feet. I would urge a yes vote on this variance. Thank you.
You're gonna have to go through each one of the...
Each one of them.
Mm-hmm. Sorry.
Through the chair. It's okay to agree with staff to refer what's in the report as well, to assist in making findings. Sorry.
I appreciate that. I agree with staff.
Will the second please speak to the motion?
I agree with Mr. Flynn and staff. I don't feel like they did this in error. Obviously, they submitted a permit that was approved, so I'll be voting yes on the motion.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Smythe?
Yes, I also intend to support this motion. I think personally being involved in trying to resolve permitting issues at MOA after the fact, I feel for this applicant. I can only imagine after spending over $400,000 to find out you're 1.1 foot over a 30-foot limit. De minimis is an understatement in this case. I think to findings on A, though, the exceptional, extraordinary physical circumstance in this case actually becomes the structure that is on the lot that's part of this case in question, and then again relates directly to B. So I have to agree, I think these are met. And again, the purpose of this board is to hear unique circumstances that need attention, and this one, in my mind, is an example of that, and we should approve. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of the motion to grant a variance to allow a single-family home to exceed the maximum height by 1.1 feet. A yes vote will grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. There are six votes in the affirmative, no votes in the negative, and the variance is Next case, case 2023-0006. Owner George Bryson is the owner or the owner's representative in attendance. Okay, thank you. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 16th, 2022, a total of 72 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 21-03-020H. As of this writing, no public comments have been received. The Bear Valley Community Council did not provide comments on this case.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none? Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. George Bryson is requesting a dimensional variance from AMC 21-06-020A, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow an existing structure to encroach 12.5 feet into a required 12.5-foot secondary front setback. The property owner has owned this parcel since 1984, sorry, and constructed the barn for which this variance is for in 1986. At the time, the owner thought the barn was being built at the property line, which would still require variance to remain in its original location within the secondary front setback. The structure also encroaches into the Hazel Street right-of-way. This barn has existed in this location for 36 years. This encroachment was discovered in conjunction with a plating action to subdivide this property with the two properties to the north to create two lots from the three lots. To finalize the plating action, this dimensional variance must be approved or the structure must be moved. In addition to this plating action, the single-family dwelling unit burnt down in 2021, and the owner is trying to rebuild his primary residence while using this barn as storage till the residence is finished. In order for the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals to approve the variance, the application must state with particularity the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, or slope, and those circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same zoning district. Standard A is not met. The subject parcel has minor topography running downhill from east to west. The lot is 28,680 square feet, 8,680 square feet greater than the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, providing ample area for the existing structure to be relocated. There are no other physical circumstances such as wetlands, streams, and/or unique geometry which affect this lot. Standard B, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. Standard B is partially met. The relocation of the existing structure would create an exceptional and undue hardship on the property owner. This structure is allowed in the R7 zoning district. Accessory structures are required, though, to remain outside of the setbacks. Standard C, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. Standard C is not met. The barn was constructed in 1986 at its current location by the property owner. Standard D, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code. Standard D is met. This variance is abutting the Hazel Court right-of-way, adjacent to the property south of Hazel Court. The structure has been at this location for 36 years, not showing any adverse effect to use of the constructed right-of-way or the adjacent property. Standard E, the variance, if granted, does not change the character of the zoning district where the property is located, is in keeping with the intent of the code and does not permit a use not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. Standard E is met. The proposed use does not change the character of the zoning district or the intent of the code. The accessory structure is allowed in the R7 zoning district. Standard F, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard F is met. The structure has existed in this location for the past 36 years, outside of the constructed right-of-way, without any known impacts to the health, safety, or welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard G, persons with disabilities are provided with access as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act and reasonable accommodations. Standard G is met. This standard is not applicable to a single-family residence. Standard H, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. Standard H is met. This is the minimum variance to allow the existing structure built in 1986 to remain in this location without having to be completely removed and relocated if possible. There were no objections to this variance from any of the reviewing agencies, starting on page 19 of the staff packet. The only comment from MOA right-of-way, traffic, and private development is condition number two on page 5 of your staff packet. For the information of the board members, the current R7 dimensional standards for lot size, front, side, and rear setbacks that exist today are the same standards that existed in 1984. There is a lay on the table from the petitioner of a few of his neighbors, one to the north, one who used to live directly to the south, and then another neighbor a little further north, of their non-objection to this request for a variance. Therefore, the department finds that standards A, B, and C are not met or partially met, while standards D, E, F, G, and H are met regarding the dimensional variance. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3, found on page 5 of your staff packet. I can answer any questions the board might have, and the petitioner is here in the audience. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is George Bryson. Last name is B-R-Y-S-O-N.
Please present your case.
Yes. Well, we're really here tonight because one year ago, our house burned down. A house we purchased in a small correction. We purchased it in 1985, not 1984, and also a small correction. I co-own the house with my wife and, so we're both bringing this request. We, at the time we purchased our house, we happened to be owners of two wild boroughs and that were, in our earlier relationship, we got married in 1983. In 1984, our first of three daughters was born, and so we started to looking in Anchorage for a place that would be suitable for a corral. And we found this property in Bear Valley in 1985. It's really at a dead end, and it seemed very suitable. So I wintered that 1985 winter by building a wall tent for the boroughs, and in 1986, I started to build the barn adjacent to Hazel Court. And at the time, I, really in good faith, I thought I needed to have a 15-foot setback from the road, so that's how the barn was placed where it was. I'll say that at that time, and... I'll say that at that time, and you'll find this in the historical record of the property, that the first 20 years we lived in the house, there were a lot of disputes over land placement in Bear Valley. And so there was a enormous replat of Rabbit Creek Heights and Rabbit Creek View, and that was completed in 2004, after we had lived there almost 20 years. And it wasn't until then that I saw that our barn was encroaching on the right-of-way. It doesn't encroach on the road, however. If you look at the pictures on page 12 of the packet, you'll see that Hazel Court doesn't really run straight. It runs away from the barn. I'm able to park a trailer next to the barn and still be off the road. And then I'll point out that we, we've lived there for 36 years, and all our neighbors have always appreciated our property, which is well-maintained, and thought the barn was picturesque. So that's how it ended up where it was. I don't really dispute anything the staff has shared, but there's, part of the reason why we're trying to replat the property, two years ago, three years ago, my neighbor and I purchased the lot in between us to protect the vegetation and the trees between us because it was up for sale all of a sudden. So we jointly purchased that property, and now since our house burned down, we decided to, it was an opportune time to add half of that undeveloped lot onto each of our properties. So in effect, our property will grow from 2/3 of an acre to 1 acre, if that's achieved. The, I have to say, the barn cannot be moved. It's, it's a pole-constructed barn. We used to have the donkeys, we used to have a horse, we used to have a goat, we had sled dogs. We don't have any of those animals anymore, but right now, it's really all we have left of our home that burned down. And so it's not so much a dollar issue with us, it's, it's an emotional, personal issue with being able to retain the barn. Right now, it has the practical use of storing some of the things we salvaged from the fire, but we'd really like to be able to retain the barn. You can see from the pictures, it, it, it isn't encroaching on the roadway, and I don't dispute that it, because of the replat, it, it does encroach on the lot line, but, but by a few feet, and I'm hoping you'll grant the variance. Kate, our surveyor is here, and she might be able to add something, and I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Thompson, of Mr. Bryson by the board members? Seeing none. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then we will open for the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Please come forward. State and spell your name for the record, please.
My name is Kenneth Lang, L-A-N-G. I have no interest in this case, but I'd like to make a point. As a surveyor, I have worked in the Bear Valley subdivision before and after the plating was done, the replating, and during the plating process, the, several of the lot lines were adjusted. In fact, quite a few of the lot lines were adjusted, and as a result, this, this barn in question most likely was originally constructed at the lot line. It obviously does not meet the setback requirements, but, but it, if, I, in my opinion, it probably was correctly constructed at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Are there any questions of Mr. Lang by the board members? Any questions of Mr. Lang by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Any questions of Mr. Lang by the applicant? He indicates no. Is there anyone else from, from the public wishing to testify in case 2023-0006? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none? Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? You have four minutes and 49 seconds left. Anything else you wish to add?
Just happy to answer any questions if you, if you do.
We didn't have any questions. Thank you. Okay. Close the public hearing. Madar rest with the board. May have a positive motion, please. Mr. Smythe. Would you state your motion, please?
Yeah, I move in case 2023-006 to approve variance from AMC 21.06.02.0A, Table 21.06-1, the Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow an existing structure to encroach 12 1/2 feet into a required 12 1/2-foot secondary front setback, subject to conditions 1 through 3 on page 5 of the staff report.
Seconded by Mr. Romer Dahl. It has been moved and seconded to grant a variance to allow an existing structure to encroach 12.5 feet into a 12.5-foot secondary front yard setback, subject to conditions 1 through 3 on page 5 of the staff report. Will the maker of the motion please speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think in, in A, exceptional, extraordinary physical circumstances similar to other cases, I think I'm going to view this from my standpoint as the fact that the structure not only is existing but has long existed. In B, I'm going to say that it is, it is substantially met, that, that strict application of the code would cause quite a hardship in this particular case. And C, the hardship is not self-imposed. I think this was done in, in, at the time, in the best interest of, of meeting the intent of the law, and again, the length of time proves no hardship imposed on anyone else. The, I believe the staff packet, or I agree with the staff packet on the remaining points. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Anyone else wish to, Mr. Romer Dahl?
Thanks. Through the chair, I intend to support the motion. Second the comments by Mr. Smythe. Also want to point to the department recommendation concerning condition number two, and also the, the correspondence from the right-of-way department on page 20 of the packet. Obviously, I would imagine that if there was a, a prevailing determination would be by that department being as it's along the right-of-way, and their support, given that they would support an application for that encroachment variance, obviously points to the fact that there's a, there's a support for the potential placement, or that, I guess, the current placement of the barn. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Romer Dahl. Anyone else wish to chime in? Are you ready for the question? Okay. The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow an existing structure to encroach 12.5 feet into a required 12-foot, 12.5-foot secondary front yard setback, subject to conditions 1 through 3 on page 5 of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. There are six votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and the variance has Next case, case 2023-0007. Applicants' Representative Lang and Associates present. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Number 16th, 2022, a total of 196 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code. The community councils were also notified. The case was published on the municipal webpage for a minimum of 21 days, and the site was posted as affirmed by the affidavit of posting submitted by the applicant, which is on page 32 of the staff packet. 35, my apologies. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none? Will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a variance request from Anchorage Municipal Code, Title 21, Chapter 7, Subsection 020, Table 21.07-1, Minimum Stream Setback Width Per Side, to allow an asphalt pad to encroach up to 24.2 feet within the riparian edge zone, and to allow a chain-link fence to encroach up to 13.7 feet within the stream-side zone of Little Campbell Creek. The variance request is necessary due to a meandering turn of Little Campbell Creek on property, which extends the total stream-side protection setback further interior of the subject parcel. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the site into a 32-unit garage condominium storage facility, and the proposed development will construct improvements generally within the existing development footprint of the current amusement establishment that was constructed in the 1990s. Planning Department has evaluated the application and presents the following findings for consideration by the board this evening. For standard A, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. The petition site is located within a historically commercial area along the sewer-to-highway corridor. The subject parcels are affected by a stream-protection setback of Little Campbell Creek, which flows along the western boundary of the petition site. Little Campbell Creek was realigned to its current path in the 1970s to minimize impacts the stream would have on development. Parcels affected by stream setbacks are less common within the B3 district and are more common within residential districts. Because of this, this encumbrance from a stream-protection setback may be considered an exceptional circumstance that is not uniformly or commonly present on other B3 parcels. For standard B, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. As demonstrated previously in standard A, there are physical constraints of the subject property in the form of streams which limits its full development potential. This constraint is not uniformly common within the B3 district and poses a unique development hardship upon the subject parcels. For standard C, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. And while it is the applicant's choice to extend the development footprint into the riparian edge and stream-side zones, they will not be paving areas outside of the current development envelope of the existing amusement establishment. The installed paving will allow for adequate vehicular turning and maneuvering on-site, and the proposed chain-link fence will provide site security and compliance with the required use-specific standards for a self-storage facility. The fence will not disturb any new riparian vegetation. Since the applicant is working within the existing development footprint, and the department recommends a condition of approval to maintain the existing, remaining riparian vegetation outside of the existing development footprint, the standard is considered met. For standard D, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. Given the character history and current zoning of surrounding properties, it does not appear at this time that the granting of this variance to encroach within the stream-protection setbacks will adversely affect the use of adjacent parcels. The proposed improvements do not extend beyond property lines, nor will they encumber adjoining property owners. Neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make full lawful use of their land and property. Stormwater drainage will be evaluated at the time a land- use permit is applied for to ensure that there are no adverse discharges into Little Campbell Creek prior to treatment and/or retention. For standard E, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. The requested variance will not change the character of the B3 zoning district in which the subject parcels are located. The B3 general business district is the highest-density commercial district within the Anchorage Pole and is intended to be highly developed. Granting this variance to encroach within the stream-protection setback will not permit either principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. The property will be developed in a manner that is consistent with the intent and purpose of the B3 district. For standard F, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. The approval of this variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. The proposed and existing encroachments, if approved and constructed in a manner compliant with municipal code, will not and do not impact public rights-of-way utilities, stormwater drainage, groundwater, airspace, and/or pedestrian facilities. Standard G, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments, as the request will not adversely affect facility accessibility. For standard H, we do believe the standard is met for both encroachments. The purpose of stream-side setbacks is to mitigate the negative impacts to the ecological function of the stream habitat. However, the proposed extent of paving does not go beyond the existing development footprint of the amusement establishment. In addition, the area east of the proposed fence location is disturbed habitat, which would provide access to the fence for maintenance without expanding into a new disturbed area. If a condition of approval to avoid any additional disturbances to existing riparian habitat in the stream-side zone, impacts to the stream as a result of paving and fence will not be increased. And we do believe that all eight standards are substantially met, and that we do recommend that both variances do be granted, subject to conditions 1, 2, 3, and 4, as shown on pages 6 and 7 of the staff packet. There is one advisory comment from Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility, but we do hope that that stays as an advisory comment. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, you mentioned the existing paving was there, and it's already in the stream-side setback, but my understanding, I want to confirm this, stream-side setback is really to eliminate any of that hard surfacing, right? So is there the potential here to modify granting this variance? I mean, it's a question for the board where we would require permeable paving. That would seem a very minor impact to this and get the intent of the stream-side setback. I guess to follow up with the question then, the intent of the stream-side setback is to limit pervious, impervious paving, correct?
Through the chair, there's two stream-side setbacks involved in this case, one being the stream-side protection setback and one being the riparian edge. Stream-side being 0 to 25 feet from the ordinary high-water mark, riparian edge being 25 feet to 50 feet beyond that. There are various activities in development that is allowed within each of those protection It is the overall intent to reduce disturbance within both of those zones per the stream-side protection ordinance. Should the board decide to go in the direction of requiring pervious pavement within that section, that, that's absolutely within the purview of this board to do so. I would just say that the Watershed Management Services did provide comments that they did not have an objection to the type of paving that was installed, or proposed to be installed, and those comments are on page 26 of the staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification on stream-side versus riparian. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other questions of staff by the board? Seeing none? Are there any questions of staff by the board? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Indicates no. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward, state and spell your name for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Travis Wilson, W.I.L.S.O.N. Thank you, staff, for the report and for the presentation. We agree with staff, and we reserve the rest of our time for any questions or clarifications you guys need.
You have nine minutes and forty-eight seconds for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Okay. Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
Madam Chair, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone from the public wishing to testify in case zero, or twenty-two-three-zero-zero-zero-seven? Anyone at all? So, does the staff have anything additional?
Madam Chair, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
And the applicant, with all that rebuttal time you've got left? Indicates no. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Moved, Ms. Sabina, seconded by Mr. Myers. Would you state your motion, please, Ms. Sabina?
I move in case twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven to approve a variance from AMC twenty-one-dot-zero-seven-dot-zero-two-zero, Table twenty-one-dot-zero-seven-dash-one, minimum stream setback width per side to allow an asphalt pad to encroach up to twenty-four-point-two feet within the riparian edge zone, and to allow a chain-link fence to encroach up to thirteen-point-seven feet within the stream-side zone of Little Campbell Creek, subject to conditions one through four, shown on pages six and seven of the staff report.
Thank you. So it has been moved and seconded to grant a variance to allow an asphalt pad to encroach twenty-four-point-two feet within the riparian zone, edge zone, and to allow a chain-fen, oh, God, a chain-link fence to encroach up to thirteen-point-seven feet within the stream-side zone of Little Campbell Creek, subject to conditions one through four, shown on pages six and seven of the staff report. Will the maker of the motion please speak to your motion?
Yes, I plan to support my motion. I believe with staff's comments, A through H, as well as their conditions, one through four, and I think it's going to be a great addition to that area of Anchorage, so.
Thank you. And the second, Mr. Myers?
I agree with staff's comments and with Jackie's comments. I think it'll be a great addition, and subject to, I intend to approve the motion as well, subject to conditions one through four.
Any further discussion? Okay. You ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow an asphalt pad to encroach twenty-four-point-two feet within a riparian edge zone, and to allow a chain-link fence to encroach thirteen-point-seven feet within the stream-side zone of Little Campbell Creek, subject to conditions one through four, shown on pages six and seven of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. There are six votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and the variance has been granted. That ends the public hearing part of the agenda. We're on to reports. I have nothing to report. Do you have anything to report? Nothing from the secretary. We don't have any committees. Any comments by board members? No comments. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Everybody moves in seconds, and so we're adjourned.